We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Yor.
Here.
McGarretti.
Here.
Calhoun.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
And Rick.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. We have one presentation today from Mr. Ed Brulee from the MCEP group, and we'll invite him to the microphone.
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Ed Brulee. I'm Secretary of the Board of McComb Cultural and Economic Partnership. It's a nonprofit organization located at 92 Northbound Grasham. I just wanted to, I come every so often to familiarize yourselves with what we've done in the last little bit. Our biggest notoriety at this point is that we support the sculpture effort in the city. And I just wanted to report that in the 2324 calendar year, we invested over $120,000 in that effort in the city.
All right.
In Mount Clemens, we are also going to undertake what we are going to call a pollinator park. That is a lot that previously was vacant by the old car dealership. It doesn't have a number that you can see, but it's at 17 Northbound Grasham.
Okay.
We started last year, got some of it done. This year, we intend to finish it. Last year, we invested $20,000 into property. This year, we will invest an additional $27,000 in the property. There'll be four sculptures, and we will use native plants in the plantings around there, so it'll be like a sculpture, a little park, and a native pollinator garden at the same time. We intend to make it familiar with a lot of the younger students, inviting them to come because all of the sculptures there, you'll be able to do something with. Three of them, you can sit and have your picture taken with a bee, a butterfly, or moth. The fourth one will be the eyes of a bee that you'd be able to look through and take your picture with also. So we'll have the plants named, and we just had put in four tulip trees, which are native to ministry, which you really don't see so many yards anymore. It's a tree that was native, but has not been kept up the nursery business. It's not the ones that they plant a lot, they should, because it has a beautiful flower, and it's a great pollinator tree. We just got a grant through the DNR, put four of them in. We had a little accident. A car seemingly came off northbound and took out, not the tree, thank goodness, but some of the stakes. We're going to get that redone this March, and then we'll have to finish that project by the end of the year. We also do a cleanup on northbound Grasham, southbound Grasham, Main Street, from Cass to Wellington. We work with a federal program that employs seniors, and they basically do two or three days a week litter control, which we need. And so they're out there trying to do the tough spots and make the south end of town look very nice. We were also, last year, in working with SMART, able to relocate one bus stop where the homeless shelter was across the street. They had a bus stop that was a mud puddle. It was no way to treat people. That has been moved about a block north or half a block north, where there is now a garbage container that doesn't look like one, it looks like a nice container and a bench. And we also were able to get rid of the plastic one on southbound Grasham in front of the book boundary and have that become metal also, so it doesn't blow over in the storms and whatnot, because people used to use it, but then it would blow over and it was a mess. Anyway, those two things have been accomplished also. So those are just a couple of the things that we're trying to do. We welcome you to take a walk anytime, invite people, family, friends, and get out and get some exercise, see all the sculptures, ask questions, get more. If there are businesses in the area who wish to help, we have two kinds of sponsorships: location, I mean, where people donate their property, and financial. These sculptures are rented from Midwest Sculpture Exchange, and they're available for purchase. Now, some of them have been permanently purchased by a business, or a person, or by MCVP to be in a sort of permanent collection that we can move around the city. So we want to make Mount Clemens art city, and we found that density is a big draw. For someone to come for one and make, but if they're coming to see two or three, and then they can stop by a business, they can stop over and have a sandwich.
Good idea.
That adds to everything. So it's only through working together that we think we'll accomplish these things. But we really like working with the city. We appreciate all the effort the city's helped us with, and thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ed, I have one question. What is the cost of the sculptures that are leased per year? So in case a business wants to know how much that kind of investment is.
Each sculpture this year was leased at $2,100. It changes year to year with the exchange that we deal with. It doesn't go up much, but it can go up. So at this point, we're dealing with $2,100. Our year is from October to October, so that's when we get the changeup, is beginning month of October.
Excellent. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Brulee? Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to adaption of the agenda.
Move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Board.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the agenda? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item Six, Public Participation. This is the first opportunity that we give the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, you abide by, oh, sorry, give us your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. We'll address those who want to in person first, and then we'll go ahead and move to our Zoom meeting. If there's anyone in person who wants to address the commission at this time, come on up to the microphone.
Paul Hayes, 21 Second Street. First thing I want to say is, as the head coach of 21 Second Street, I'm a partner in the initiative called Breaking Barriers to Play, and we're interested in continuing Breaking Barriers to Play. We serve its youth between the ages of four to 18. They come as far as south as Detroit, as far north as New Baltimore, and all points in between. We not only offer reasonably priced, high-quality athletics, we also help to change the perception of Mount Clemens. We would like to continue our relationship with you and keep Breaking Barriers to Play programming continuing in the city of Mount Clemens. For those residents who have been having problems on the website, you do not click on youth, you click on sports, and then you click on youth sports. So if you click on youth, although you see sports there, you will not see our sports there. Then I also have some other questions that have been being asked to me. You know, I'll ask those, but I also have a personal question first. Can I lease space in the building as a for-profit entity? Not the entire building, I do not want a 12,000-square-foot building, but can I lease space to operate as a for-profit entity?
Are you talking about Karnes?
Karnes.
Yes, Karnes Community Center, and I rent space.
And if so, what would be the process? Commissioner Rick, will the center be only open during programming? I would like a public answer. Commissioner Calhoun, will there be regular hours for the center to be open? I would like a public answer. Commissioner Dempsey, will there be a committee regarding operation of the community center to help with brainstorming ideas to be a volunteer group or to be a watch group? I would like a public answer. Mayor Krapp, will there be more programs at Karnes than different types of programs at Karnes? I would like a public answer. Commissioner Fournier, what's the process to start a program at Karnes? I would like a public answer. Commissioner McGarretti, what kinds of programs can happen at Karnes? I would like a public answer. Will it be open for events such as birthdays, repasses, community meetings, family reunions, socials, dances, vendor events, workshops? I would like a public answer. Commissioner Yor, do you have to be in an organization to have a program at Karnes? I would like a public answer. Commissioner McGarretti, will the community center become a polling site? I would like a public answer. Commissioner Fournier, will the community center offer resource fairs? I would like a public answer. Mayor Krapp, is the city actively looking for grants or other funding solutions to add resources to the community center? I would like a public answer. Commissioner Dempsey, does the city have a rental policy for Karnes Community Center? I would like a public answer, and if there is one, where is it posted? I would like that as a public answer also. Commissioner Calhoun, does the city have rental policies for other city-controlled properties? I would like a public answer. Thank you very much. These are the questions that I get.
You have to give Rick the last one.
And Rick, the last question that I do have, where does the city have its rental policies listed for all of the properties? I would like a public answer. And thank you all so much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else at this time who would like to?
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. I'm from the old school. Much as things change, they remain the same. We went through this with Karnesville years ago. We marched, we got monies to build it and everything else, but seemingly, the city does not want to, and if I'm wrong, you correct me, the city does not want to be over it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right now, because the city just got Karnes two years ago, Mrs. Stevens. So I just wanna, I just wanna clarify that. The school district ran Karnes.
Let me finish.
Okay.
So it was leased out. At that time, it was leased out to Karnes, to the school, and then the school no longer could do it. They leased it out to the gentleman that took over, and it was just, was not run properly. But where was the city running the building? You run all the other facilities with managers and everywhere else. Why is it that we don't have something specifically in place? And if I'm wrong, correct me. If I'm wrong, correct me. But it's just like, as much as things change, seemingly, it goes on and on, and we pull away, and as if we don't want to have anything to do with Karnes. So don't, don't, don't show disrespect, because you're on camera.
I'm not being disrespectful at all, but I am happy to.
But let me finish, and let me have my say.
Yep, I'm happy to let you.
But the point is that I'm trying to make, and if you would listen, is that in the newsletters, basically Karnes is really not noticed about what programs, and there's no picture of Karnes, it's just saying where they are, these kinds of things. It's just like, we're there, but we're not there. So how is the city going to implement and bring it into part of the recreation program with directors and things that are over it and programs that impact the communities, not just that side of town, the communities? You know, the way it's seemingly now, it's into isolation, and it's, it's just not, you know, it's not sitting right. It's not sitting right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Alan Cobb, 10 Deal Drive, Mount Clemens, Michigan. He asked most of the questions I had about Karnes. My next question would be, when are we going to repay Clinton River Drive across from the post office? We have been put in black car down for too long. I'm going to start sending the bill to the car, from my car to the city soon. I would like a public answer for that one. Number two, I would like a public answer for this. How many dispensaries are we going to allow in Mount Clemens alone? We don't need that many. And why was there a dispensary allowed to be put at the beginning of a black neighborhood that already has a drug rehab any, that our children have to walk to and from to go to school? I would like a public answer for that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Shayna Kirk, 34140 Wallace Street, and I am here in support of Coach Hayes and the community center, Karnes Community Center. I have been an active volunteer since last year, and I'm very disappointed that there isn't nothing going on right now. We don't have the resources, we don't have the support. I'm actually trying to get a program there for preschoolers, Head Start Program, where kids can come in and learn how to play sports, come and do activities. It's a low cost to the community, and it's right in the heart, where parents can come in and walk their children. We get together, we meet up for two hours, and we play about two days a week. I've been trying to get that program going for a while now, but I haven't had any communication with anyone to reach out to me. My children have also been participating in the programs through Coach Hayes, and they are doing an awesome job, and I really want to see this to continue in the community. It is great for the community. Born and raised, my family's from Mount Clemens, this is something nice for the kids. My daughter, she has learned to be more confident with herself. She even joined or tried out and made the middle school basketball team because of the sports programs that gave her, you know, a lead to get out there and have some confidence. So I would like to see more, more programs go on, because we have the people that want to volunteer, but we don't have the resources. We don't have the help. I don't see anyone coming out to help out and to just give, so we can get back to the community. This is something that needs to be active. It's March, and we haven't had anything really for a couple months now. Started a girl program there where we give our time, we're reaching out to the young girls of the community, and unfortunately, we haven't been able to do anything, because we just don't have access to the community center anymore. So we don't, we don't have access to the community center, because we don't know really the protocol to have the programs. So I would like to, to learn what we need to do to be more active, and I would like to see the Karnes Community Center be open more for the public, so it can be used as it needs to be used. Thank you.
Can you do me a favor, and before you leave, can you make sure we get your contact info?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
I'm short. Good evening. Jean Dixon, 114 Needle Street, Mount Clemens. I've been before the commission before, and I don't like to come before the commission. I think everybody gets a little nervous, I get a little nervous, I get a little flustered, but I do have some questions, and it's always concerning Karnes pretty much. My first question is the policy on hours. That's very important to me, because we have had some events that go on, and they may be a little late, but they kind of want to talk to us about it, but we've never had an issue, so I don't know what's to talk about. So I want to know about the hours for all the recreation buildings, as far as how late they're open. And my next question is, will funds be allowed for Karnes, for senior programs, and for the youth? I know Coach Hayes does a lot with the youth, but still, you know, we need tutoring to go on, and it takes people to be in place. But if we can get volunteers, it can work, because our kids, there's, as we know, there's a gap in Mount Clemens, so we need to build our children up. And Karnes is a community center, and that can help. My next question would be about the dispensaries. I don't live on this side of town, but I'm on this side of town, and it's a part of my community. Mount Clemens is my community. As I said before, I was born here 71 years ago. I've never lived, well, I've lived somewhere for a few months, but not really. Mount Clemens has always been my driver's license. So these, the dispensaries in our neighborhoods, put them, put them on a main thruway, so that everybody has access. This is a main thruway, but it leads right into our neighborhood. So is that proper? Would you want it to be in your, at the corner of your neighborhood? Would you want it to happen? I don't think so, because it hasn't happened yet. Number four, the girls' group. I have watched that girls' group prosper, raise our young girls up, give them the supplies that they need at Karnes. Our kids need attention, and if they can't go to Karnes, we do have churches, yeah, they're nonprofit too, but this is a community. So our children do have, they need access to learning and all the opportunities that's here from Mount Clemens. Thank you very much.
Nelson Jackson, 615 Wellington Crescent. When can the community expect an action plan from this commission detailing how it would make the community center, Karnes Community Center, a valuable asset to the community? Who will direct this effort? What will the budget look like? Will the commission establish a community center committee to report to the commission? I suggest that this commission can give yourselves a 90-day timeline to report back to the community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
Good evening. My name is Sheila Beaman. I reside at 118 Clemens Street. I'm here to support my community center, which is the Karnes Community Center. I would also like to commend Coach Hayes for the wonderful job he has done and is still doing for the center, and I hope with the new takeover, all activities and events will still be continued. It really makes me happy to see the center being used by all, from babies on up to the senior citizens, the Veyg Green Memorial Basketball Court, the field itself, the field itself, and the indoor center. Now, we just need to have a playground equipped with swings, slides, and so forth for the, in that area, and I just want to say I love my community center, Karnesville.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Marilyn Donelson. Good to see you, Barb. Haven't seen you in a long time. Anyway, what I want to say is Karnes Center, any community center, helps to enhance the quality of life for people of all ages and backgrounds and abilities, by giving them access to affordable facilities and programs that unite families and neighbors together. My questions are, I've been out of the loop for a long time. I want to know what caused the termination? What was the reason for the termination of the lease? Was it the infrastructure? Was it budget challenges, building not suitable? What was the reason? What's going to be done with the property? How will the property be used? Will the city maintain ownership of the property, or will the property be sold? And also, will the community, the people that live in and around the community, will they be, have a final decision or determination regarding the property? I don't want to cheer your name up, Mayor KROPP, but I read like in '23, there was like a $900,000 grant, hopefully to help Karnesville for lacrosse and soccer. We all know that 72% of the people that do lacrosse and soccer aren't living over there by Karnesville, but they can learn, but they don't live over there by Karnesville. It would be nice to have lacrosse. It would be nice to have soccer. Karnes Community Center has enhanced my grandchildren by many, many ways. Instead of them just walking around in the streets doing anything, nothing, they go to the center, play basketball. They're excited about it. It gives them a refuge when they get tired of being at home like all of us do. Nobody wants to stay in the house 24/7, school and home. Nobody wants that, nobody needs that. It's not good mentally. I thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
My name's Erin Sheridan. I'm at 12 Alter Court, and I'm here in support of the Breaking Barriers program that they're doing at Karnes and the Hey Coach program. I've had a daughter that's been in the program for a couple sessions now, and I think they're doing great things, and I think that it's, it's wonderful, and I hope that we can keep doing things like that and having more programs at the center and being able to access the information correctly as a resident would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Anyone on Zoom? All right, we'll go ahead and move to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during the previous meeting. Mr. Shipman, I don't see anything on here.
We did have one. There was a question asked, when the Portage Johns would be out at Shadyside, and they were put out last Friday, so they're up.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the city commission meeting, commission meeting minutes of February 20th, '24.
Support. Anybody have any questions or comments about last meeting's minutes? Okay, call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Moving on to general business, we'll go to Item A, Resolution Approving a Social District Permit for Bath City Bistro.
I move to approve the attached resolution approving the application of Bath City Bistro for a local social district permit and to recommend approval to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
Support. Mr. Shipman.
Eligible establishments for the social district are required to have approval via resolution from the local municipality prior to applying for a social district permit from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. A certificate of liability insurance is required as a condition of approval.
Anybody have any questions or comments, or Mr. Shipman? Okay. I just have one comment. I'm happy to see another one of our restaurants join in on the social district. The social district's success is really dependent on our restaurants and bars' participation, so we're lucky, we're excited to have another establishment, and I know the members of the DDA board were very happy to hear that Bath City was signing up. So, anybody else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay, general business 9B, Approval to Enter Into an Agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the pavement resurfacing of Hubbard. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution and approve the contract between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the city of Mount Clemens for the pavement resurfacing of Hubbard Street. M dot contract number 245023, as presented, and to authorize the city manager and the public services director to sign and enter into the agreement.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Shipman.
In close, for your review, is the Surface Transportation Program contract, along with the municipal resolution for the pavement resurfacing of Hubbard Street from Grossbeck to Eldridge. This is a contractual document between the Michigan Department of Transportation and the city of Mount Clemens, which outlines the performance of the project and the project costs. The total cost for The total cost for the repair of Hubbard Street is one million, two hundred fifty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars. Federal Surface Transportation Fund shall be applied to eighty-one point eight-five percent of the applicable project cost. The remaining balance of two hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars will be funded by the city's major streets fund. Please be advised, this contract has been reviewed by the city attorney. The attached resolution is necessary in order to specifically name the officials who are authorized to sign the said contract.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman? Commissioner Rick.
How, how did we end up at Hubbard? I'll, I'll take any street I can get, but.
Right.
Was it because of what was underneath it or?
Well, Jeff can explain the, the different parameters that make that applicable.
Thank you.
There are a handful of streets that are eligible for, for federal funding. And we only have a couple left, um, that are eligible for that funding, Hubbard being one of them. And based on its condition, applied for that grant for that section of Hubbard.
Okay, so we're pretty constrained on our options.
Correct.
For this particular grant.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else, questions or comments? Okay, call the roll, please.
Kraut.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, item C, resolution approving charitable gaming license for Turning Point.
I move to adopt a local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses for Turning Point Incorporated.
Support.
Okay, uh, Mr. Shipman.
Turning Point Incorporated, located at seventy-six South Main Street, has provided programs and resources to survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault since nineteen eighty. Because of a decrease in government funding, Turning Point wishes to conduct raffles so that they may continue their mission of providing services to these survivors. As a result, they must apply for a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan and provide a resolution from a local government unit recognizing it as a nonprofit organization in the community. Turning Point is recognized by the Internal Revenue Service as a five oh one C three organization.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the charitable gaming license for Mr. Shipman? Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
Okay, item D, two twenty-two Companies LLC Provisioning Center Retail Establishment Marijuana Business Conditional Permit Extension.
Move to approve the extension of the two twenty-two Companies LLC Provisioning Center Retail Establishment Marijuana Business Conditional Permit for one year to end on March sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Support.
Mr. Shipman.
Two 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 Companies LLC was issued a Provisioning, Provisioning Center Retail Establishment Marijuana Business Conditional Permit on March sixth, two thousand twenty-three. To obtain the full permit from the city, certain requirements must be fulfilled, including most notably completing the licensing process, the state of Michigan, and furnishing a copy of the state license. Furthermore, the conditional permit is valid for one year, and in the event the Provisioning Center slash retail establishment is not operational within said time period or by March sixth, two thousand twenty-four, the permit shall be deemed forfeited. Two twenty-two Companies LLC is seeking a one-year extension of the conditional permit or until March sixth, two thousand twenty-five, so the Provisioning Center Retail Establishment project can be properly completed. The city's present marijuana business ordinance provides allowance for such an extension request pursuant to twenty-four point one one seven, section seventy, which states, "The city commission may extend the approval for a permit for an additional one-year period." Two 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 Companies LLC has completed construction at seventy-five Mary Street and is in the late stages of final approvals. Inspections were conducted within the last week, and two 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 Companies LLC should have a certificate of occupancy very soon.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Calhoun.
Oh, so just to be clear, uh, seventy-five Mary Street, that's a mostly industrial area, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Rick.
Any, um, hints as to when the state's going to, we've, this is like with the third, fourth one we've done. Any idea when we're going to start seeing more of these?
We just got.
Finished. We just got one?
As far as the money we're receiving?
No, as far as, um.
Bloomingdale just got a license.
Okay.
Yeah, so they were, yeah.
Okay. It's primarily due to construction, right? They just haven't gotten there.
Yeah, they have to finish construction, they have to be inspected by the state before they can get their license. So I know Bloomingdale just got theirs, and I would imagine two 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 is not far behind.
Okay, thank you.
The problem is, is that they have to build everything out within a year's time span. And so that's why we end up getting an extension usually is because it's difficult to complete construction on such large build-outs, right? So I, I would not, it's not out of the ordinary, I think, for most locations.
Okay. So is this saying that this is going to be a site at this address here?
Yes. But this is our, the license has already been given. This is just an extension because their construction project has lasted more than their year's permit. So that's why. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
McGarretti.
No.
Okay, moving on to approval of revised dates of special event permit, pleasantries consumption event, item E.
I move to approve the resolution for temporary marijuana event for Pleasant Trees Cannabis Company on March twenty-nine thirty and thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Okay, uh, Mr. Shipman.
On January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the city commission approved a resolution allowing RGB Enterprises, RGB Enterprises LLC, also doing business as Pleasant Trees Cannabis Company, told a special one-time marijuana consumption event in their private property located at two thirty-seven North River Road from March eighth through March tenth, two thousand twenty-four, to coincide with the grand reopening of its retail store. Because of some construction issues, RGB Enterprises LLC has requested to push the event back three weeks with the same terms and conditions as the original request. The temporary special marijuana consumption event would take place on March twenty-ninth from twelve PM to nine PM, March thirtieth from nine AM to nine PM, and March thirty-first from nine AM to nine PM, instead of the original dates approved by the city commission. The marijuana business ordinance grants representatives of the Macomb County Sheriff's Office the right during the hours of operation to inspect permitted premises. State approval is also required for this event.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, how many, how many do we have in our city?
That have a permit from the state right now?
Yes, right now.
Three.
And this is an event, this isn't a, okay. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, um, call the roll, please.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
McGarretti.
No.
Rick.
Yes.
Okay, general business, item F, purchases and payments.
Move to approve purchases and payments of invoices as presented.
Support.
Okay, does anybody have any question, uh, questions or comments on any of the payments? Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Okay, uh, agenda item ten, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
McGarretti.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Okay, this is, oh, sorry, city manager's report. Getting ahead of myself.
New window signage has recently been installed at the DDA's downtown office at forty-eight Cherry Street. The DDA will also be installing a digital monitor that will provide information about events, construction updates, and other information that would be valuable to the public. The Cherry Street studio is also available for rent for event space. Please call five eight six four six nine four one six eight for rental information. The two thousand twenty-four presidential primary occurred last Tuesday with two thousand three hundred and fifty-two Mount Clemens residents casting their votes for the office of President of the United States. This election was the first of its kind because of the addition of early voting. Thank you to the forty-five Mount Clemens election workers who worked the nine days of early voting as well as on Election Day. Couldn't have done it without you. Or of course, our clerks. Thank you, clerks. Mount Clemens is applying for a DWSRF loan in the amount of seven million dollars for water main and lead service line replacements. Awardies may receive loan forgiveness through bipartisan infrastructure law funding. Lead service line investigations and replacements are mandated by the state of Michigan. Mount Clemens is also applying for a SEMCOG Safe Streets and Roads for All grant to develop a road safety audit program. An RSA is a formal safety performance examination of an existing or planned road or intersection by an independent multidisciplinary audit team. The average RSA is approximately twenty thousand dollars. Spring edition of the Clementines was mailed out last Friday. Would you like to see your picture of the Mount Clemens, of, of Mount Clemens on the cover of the next issue? You may submit your seasonal photo for the June, July, and August issue to paddles@mountclemens.gov. On our upcoming events, we have a Mount Clemens Kids Business Fair Saturday, May eleventh, from ten AM to four PM. For information, call five eight six four three one six seven eight eight. The Mount Clemens Business Fair, Kids Business Fair, is a great opportunity for kids ages nine to sixteen to experience entrepreneurship in a one-day showcase. The event will take place during the Made in Michigan Show in downtown Saturday, May eleventh, from ten AM to four PM. The Kids Business Fair is an opportunity for kids to create a business and sell a product or service. The Kids Business Fair is limited to twenty booth spaces. And we have the Mount Clemens Made in Michigan Show Saturday, May eleventh, ten AM to seven PM, and Sunday, May twelfth, from ten AM to five PM. There'll be live entertainment at the Fountain Stage both days. Booth space is still available. Call five eight six four three one six seven eight eight, and Mickey will be glad to hook you up with a booth.
All right, does anybody have any questions or comments for? Okay.
And this road safety, um, certificate or, uh, audit?
Yes.
Is that for any roads? I mean, do they pick them? Do we pick them?
We pick it, we pick it, yeah.
They can be local roads?
Um, they can be.
So we can.
So you, what you want to do is you want to pick something that shows a lot of history of accidents, deaths, per the SEMCOG map. If you pick something that doesn't have a lot of incidents at it, your chances of getting the loan are probably pretty slim.
Who's providing the grant? State or federal?
Well, the money actually is trickled down to SEMCOG, and they distribute it.
So it's federal money?
It's federal money.
Federal? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for the city manager's report? Okay, we will move on then to public participation. This is the second opportunity that we had, uh, allowed the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you give us your full name, come with a microphone, your residential address, and that you abide by our two-minute rule.
Ruthie Stevenson, sixty-nine, Dane. Uh, just to piggyback on what Mr. Hayes stated, those questions and comments. Uh, once you ascertain those, uh, is it possible that we could have a community meeting at the Carnes Center for people to discuss their opinions and, and, and processes on the things that are happening? That was basically what I needed to know.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time?
Lot of ants.
Quick question, Carl, twenty, twenty-one second street.
Wait, I'm gonna.
You said something about some ants.
Well, I'm gonna stop you though, but if, if you have some, we just need you to come to the microphone because then it's, it's recorded on the video, so, but. Thank you.
Marilyn Donaldson, uh, since I've been sitting here, I've killed two big ants. Uh, so you might want to just like let somebody know.
Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you, appreciate it. Okay.
Carl, twenty-one second street. Just curious if you guys have the legal right and authority to be able to levy taxes? And if so, could we levy a tax on the marijuana businesses that are now in our community to help pay for some of our recreation? I mean, if they're going to be taking some money away from the adults, maybe we can tax it and give it back to the kids. Don't know if that's possible, but as I was sitting here listening, just came to me, so I'm asking.
Thank you. I like it. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Okay, anybody in, on Zoom? Okay. All right, then we will go ahead and move on to commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner Yor.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody who came up tonight to join the meeting and to take an opportunity to tell us your thoughts. It's really helpful to me, and I'm sure the rest of the council, I mean, really helpful. So the woman who said, "We don't like to come before the commission," we'd like you to come before the commission. So please, keep coming. Um, I know that it was really helpful to hear from all of you, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McGarretti.
Thank you. I, I, I too have that same, um, I agree with you, Commissioner. Um, we're here to serve our residents. You voted us into these seats, and the comments, the questions, the suggestions, and even the compliments are always welcome from the residents. We have to build this city together. We have to build it together, and so, um, I think, I know, Mount Clemens is a wonderful city. If you don't believe me, watch some of the other city commission meetings. Um, and the only way that we'll be able to do that is to just work together continually, bring your suggestions and comments. I can't stress it enough, when I took vow, it was to serve, or to continue to serve, the residents that I live with. So I, I ask that you continue to bring that, um, those questions, suggestion, comments, um, to us. I did want to leave, always try to leave with some type of resource. If it's not for you, it's for somebody in your neighborhood. FEMA has funding from that big storm we had in August. And so if you've had damage, even appliance damage, vehicle damage, you can apply for that online or help someone that you know. You know the people in your neighborhood who had damage. Um, so you go to the website, which is disasterassistance.gov, disasterassistance.gov, and complete that information. If you need assistance, or you know when they are, again, facing eviction, water, electric, gas challenges within our city, contact McComb County Community Action Center. There is available funding, it's an easy process, and if you need help in filling out the application, I will help you do that, or help your neighbor. So just give us a call, we're right at the old DHS office. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We also have, on our, um, city's Facebook page, actually all our social media channels, we do have the information for FEMA, along with the link on where to apply. So just check it out, City of Mount Clemens.
I also want to thank everyone for coming and for giving us your thoughts and your comments. And, um, clearly, we have to get the word out there what's going on. But please understand that it's not for a lack of doing something. Everyone on this commission is vested and so want Carnes Community Center to be a viable, active part of our community. Absolutely, there's nobody up here that doesn't believe that. But we've had, you know, we got to do some pivoting here and figure out what's next on the agenda. So we appreciate all your comments, and we do intend to get back. And Coach Carl, I don't know if we can put another tax on those dispensaries, but they sure are a source of donations, and I think you need to visit them.
Thank you. Commissioner Rick.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, as they've said, thank you, everyone that came out. Please continue to tell us what you want, what you need, what you're not getting. Um, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to advocate for recreation. It's a vital part of everyone's life, and I was glad to hear the topic of senior recreation come up a few times. That is the leading risk reduction factor in preventing elder abuse. Um, I'd like to thank the city clerk and her team. Uh, another, another successful election in the books. Now, now you get to take. Now, now you get to take a break till the next one, except doing all the other stuff. Uh, I'd also like to, uh, thank the core team that put together our DEI training. I was glad to see how well it went, and I was glad to see how well it was received. Uh, I loved seeing the comments along the lines of, it wasn't what I was expecting, it was really helpful. Which, take it for what it's worth, but I like that we're breaking down people's misconceptions about what DEI training can be. I'd like to give a congratulations to the McComb Foster Closet on receiving their half a million dollar grant, which is kinda awesome.
Awesome.
Uh, and thank MCEP for their continued investment in our community, both financially and with the work they're doing. I'd like to echo the, uh, my previous comments from last meeting, May 4th. Uh, citywide cleanup, uh, meeting up at the Ross Cop at 10:00. Uh, and contact the beautification committee for any questions. Uh, 26th May at 11:00 at Clinton Grove Cemetery, we'll be having our Memorial Day ceremony with the various veterans groups, and I encourage anyone else available to attend. There will be a river cleanup in June. More details to follow. Um, and I'd like to thank Raymond for continuing to serve on our Parks and Recreation Board. And I would encourage anyone who has it in their schedule, the time to serve, to seek out additional information about our boards and committees because we are always looking for more help in running these programs. And thank you for those that are already serving the community, maybe not on a board, maybe not on a committee, but taking care of our, our kids already.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Calhoun.
Yeah, well, I wanted to also thank everyone for coming out, making some time to speak to us and let, uh, let us know your thoughts. As Commissioner McGarrett said, we all work for you. And, uh, when you let us know what you're thinking, uh, it helps us to, uh, put the city and, uh, get us on the right course and, uh, help, uh, direct the city administration to get the good things done, to continue getting good things done for our city. Um, I want to, um, also, I mean, because so many people spoke about Carnes, um, that has been a, a serious concern for a number of commissioners. Um, a number of us have very recently gone to Carnes to talk to different people who've been involved to learn more. Um, we've heard about the confusion when it comes to, um, scheduling events there and the hours. And so, um, these are, um, thank you for speaking up more about these things. And hopefully, um, the, the many questions that we've been assigned, Coach Hey, uh, we'll be able to, like, get some, uh, answers, uh, either ourselves or through the city administration.
You need.
Um, this, uh, previous week, we had the opportunity to, um, go downtown and to the, um, water treatment plant, um, to advocate for, um, federal funding to, uh, support the projects going on there. And so, uh, I just wanna thank the staff, uh, who keep our water tasting good and clean, uh, for their hard work that they do. It goes unseen, uh, but they, they do amazing work there, um, with, uh, tools that are pretty old, and so.
Not with a new.
Very much, yeah. Um, let's see here. Also, um, March is Women's History Month. And so I just wanna thank the women who serve on the City Commission with me, um, for the sacrifices that you make. Uh, and I wanna thank everyone in the community, all the women in our community who, uh, make Mount Clemens home. We appreciate you. Um, and let's see here. I believe that is all. Uh, oh, actually, I have one more thing. The city's social media has been doing a fantastic job, uh, and so I wanna convey that, um, to them. Uh, they just posted a video about the sidewalk program and, um, a few other things. And so go ahead and check that out. They've got plenty of new information there. Uh, that's extremely helpful. That is all.
Thank you. Commissioner Dempsey.
I'll just ditto it. I do have one announcement, though. The, the Crocker House Museum in town, we're having our big fundraiser April 6th at Sucaro's. It's, um, decorate table. It's a theme, your favorite things. It's fantastic luncheon, so if anybody's interested, the tickets are $50. And there's lots of, we have over 40 raffle baskets. We have tons of main prizes. It's really a great event. It's been going on for a long time. And, um, really appreciate any support you can give to the Crocker House. It's one of our biggest fundraisers that we have to support the Crocker House. We do not get any federal money, any city money, any state money to operate that museum. And it takes a lot of money. It's an old house and a lot of repairs. So, uh, we really appreciate, um, in fact, we're gonna start, I think, in May. We're gonna be open every Sunday, which we haven't been able to do for a while, so all through summer. And we have a lot of the events planned, so tickets are $50. You can contact 586-465-2488. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I, um, want to first start by saying, um, I apologize to, uh, Ms. Stevens for interrupting you. I've never interrupted anybody who's come to the microphone for public comments. And, um, so I apologize for that because I, I do not mean any disrespect. Um, I feel very passionately about Carnes and, um, and what we're doing at Carnes and, and how, like, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Fournier mentioned that we need to pivot uh, now that circumstances have changed. Um, and so I, I could go into a lot of some of the questions that were asked, but, um, I wanna make sure that I have a very thought-out response because I'm very, very passionate about it, and I don't wanna give an emotional response. Um, because I could right now, especially some of the accusations of, um, programming that are not addressing the community's needs. Because when we wrote those grants, for example, we did that in collaboration with the people that were, were working directly in Carnes. That was not an initiative by any specific staff member. That was a collaboration with Hay Coaching and TCB Mentoring and L.K. St. Clair, who are delivering every day programming for those kids. And they were the ones who suggested what was written in that grant. So to say that it was, you know, because of what I would want or what any of these commissioners would want personally is just flat out wrong. And like I said, I'm not going to get into all of the specifics today because as you can see, I am very emotional about it because I feel very strongly that that community center should be an incredible resource for our entire city. And we will not move Mount Clemens forward until we move our entire city forward, which includes the neighborhood that needs the most resources. Where we know 40% of the people in that community don't have access to transportation. Where we know our poorest children live. I'm not blind to any of that. I was one of those kids growing up. I feel for those kids. Let me tell you, I have been and worked at Carnes. I have given my money. I have given my time. I have dragged my kids to Carnes. I will not. I'm gonna go on my list because I know I will not do it justice on what needs to be said. Thank you, Barb. I wanna congratulate Ava Masickio, who represented the Mount Clemens Montessori Academy this weekend at the Mount Clemens, or sorry, the McComb County Spelling Bee. Ava was eliminated within the first few rounds, but she did an excellent job representing Mount Clemens at the McComb County Spelling Bee. I would like to thank Seminole, uh, I mean, Seminole for hosting the Black History Celebration last week where Commissioner Rick, Commissioner Dempsey, and I attended, and it was a huge celebration. Uh, there were hundreds of people and hundreds of families that attended, and it was, um, really exciting to see, uh, what was happening there. Um, I would like to thank, uh, the Montessori Academy for having me out and, uh, Commissioner Rick's children for, for raising their hands and, uh, asking questions, um, of what the mayor does, so I appreciate that. Um, but we had a great time kicking off the Marches Reading Month at the Montessori Academy. Um, I'd like to thank the Mount Clemens Public Library for, on, uh, hosting, uh, myself and several members of the community, including the, um, Candace, uh, Candace Jackson, who was a Mount Clemens alumni, who was also, uh, the, uh, Michigan State Teacher of the Year. And she was celebrated at the, um, at the reading, and she also read to the children. And I would say that she obviously did the best job of all of the, uh, people who read that, that day. Um, I would like to mention that I'm having a coffee talk tomorrow instead of next Tuesday at John's Family Grill, um, at 9:30 AM because I have to attend a conference next Tuesday, um, in Lansing for the City of Mount Clemens. So instead of canceling, I'd like to just reschedule that to next Tuesday. I'd like to thank the MCEP for the sculpture program and for all of their efforts that they presented today on addressing some of our issues on northbound and southbound Gracia as well as Main Street. They have taken, um, some of these vacant lots and made them a, a great addition to our neighborhood and, um, our thoroughfare, so when people come to town, they get to see beautiful art and they get to see our city shining. And I'm, I'm really thankful for them for, to do those efforts. Um, I would like to mention that, um, um, I was contacted by a woman named Ms. Chacony, and, um, she wanted to make sure that we knew. Um, she, her name was Ruth Chacony of Rochester Hills. She called this after, uh, she called last week to let us know, um, that there was such kindness and professionalism from our fire department displayed to her this past February 24th. She said she felt she had to call because she knows the most people are calling only to complain and not to compliment. On Saturday afternoon around 3:00, 3:00 PM, she was leaving the Mount Clemens Grill after having lunch with her family when she tripped and fell at the exit. Her family called 911. She's handicapped and on oxygen and was laying there unable to get up. When much to her embarrassment, the fire department arrived. After they evaluated her, uh, they helped her get into a seated position and eventually walked her to her vehicle after making sure she was okay. Ms. Chacony wanted to make sure, um, that we all knew how kind and professional all our firefighters were. And those, I asked who was on duty. And so we wanna thank Lieutenant Anthony Kirkham, firefighter Brett Lepley, and probationary firefighter Jake Corzanowski for their efforts on February 24th. Um, I'd also like to mention that, um, there was an incident at the, um, ice arena last week where a gentleman fell and had a heart issue on the, on the ice. Um, and three gentlemen, sorry, four gentlemen, who, um, we're gonna later acknowledge, uh, with a certificate of appreciation. But basically, four strangers rushed to the aid of this man who was having a heart, a cardiac incident. Um, because of their lifesaving measures, the man has lived. And because of, um, having an AED lifesaving device at the ice arena, the gentleman will live to see another day. And so we're so thankful for the four gentlemen who were, um, able to know what to do and, um, and, and took the situation into their hands until the first responders could come and, um, help that situation. So I'd like to thank all of them, and like I said, we will be acknowledging them at a future commission meeting. Um, and I think that, that is my entire list, so thank you very much. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Uh, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.